Thank you very much, Liam. That was a great job. We have three presentations tonight. The first one, Item 3A, Jen Atwood and Marilyn Richards, representatives from the Jordan School District, an update on the five-year building plan, building construction plan.
Hello, good evening. Mayor Ralph and the city council members, thank you so much for allowing us to be here this evening. We wanted to present with you tonight all the five-year building plan, and this is in compliance with our interlocal agreement. We, as a board, always are very happy to be working with the city and feel that we have some good information to share with you this evening. I believe that Ms. Briggs has handed out the five-year plan. As you will see there, we did not add anything to the 2021-22 school years. Oh, I'm just going to move that here. And that is because we are opening up so many schools in the 2019-2020 school years. We did add to our five-year projected building construction plan the hotspots and where we need to be aware of, where the student growth is happening, and what we really need to pay close attention to. And next year, this will be evaluated again, as we do on a yearly basis, and we will look at those hotspots again and evaluate where we may need to do for the following year. At this point, we are in a lot of construction with a lot of new schools, and we're very excited about that possibility with that bond passing last November. We feel very fortunate that our constituents had the confidence in the Jordan District to help us pass that bond in order to go forward with those schools that are being built within our district that were so desperately needed. Did you have any questions on the five-year building construction?
Any questions from council? Councilmember Burton?
Thank you. I see we have Grace Jordan Middle School, which has already begun its construction. Can you share with us how that's going and what the progress is on that, please?
We are right on target, and it's exciting to see some structure coming above ground. So everybody's very excited. To me, that's kind of a bittersweet building. It's sad to see the existing building go, but everybody's very excited about that. We're right on target with opening in the 2000, I'm sorry, 2019-2020 school year.
Okay. And then, my question is on Copper Hills High School. Can you tell me what is the plans for Copper Hills to help relieve some of their overcrowding, please?
That's a great question. We, as a board, had in-depth conversation about that last evening. We were in a conversation for about three hours on one topic, and I think that's the longest that we have been on one topic, and it really was the enrollment within our schools. A big discussion with the Copper Hills community last year, and President Voorhees, on our board, is the representative of Copper Hills High School. She's had conversation with their school community council again this year. They feel very strongly that they would not like us to move boundaries now and then again when West Jordan Middle School opens. We are projecting, once West Jordan Middle School opens, there will probably be a pretty significant boundary change between high schools and middle schools in the West Jordan areas. And they asked us to not really go forward with those boundary changes this next coming school year, because they know it's going to happen the following.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a couple of questions, also related to Copper Hills, which is in District Four, where I represent. And, you know, with the student population at Copper Hills High School, there's also an issue with parking and having adequate parking where students are parking in neighborhoods and doing a little littering and just little things like that. But I'm just wondering, I've met with the principal there a few months ago, and we talked about options for additional parking, maybe moving faculty or some of those things. Is that something that is on the radar at some point in the future to address some of that, especially if boundaries change and things like that?
It absolutely is on our radar. That's a great question. Yes, because we hear from the community, we hear from the students, from parents and faculty at Copper Hills. There's very limited space within their footprint to put additional parking. And where there is space to put additional parking, it would be much more, and the higher cost due to having to level the ground where the grass spaces are, where they're on a hill. So that is absolutely something that we will have to take into account, but we'd really like to see what the impact is from the potential boundary change. So yes, it's always on our radar, but we do need to do some evaluations when we do look at the boundary changes as well.
Okay. I appreciate that. And then the second question I have, and you may not be able to answer this.
I will certainly try.
And I realize we have a lot of growth in the Jordan School District. There's a lot of open space that could be developed and probably lots of schools that'll still be built, which has an impact on this question. Some of the other districts are starting to move ninth grade into the high schools and bringing sixth grade into the junior high. Is that something that's on the horizon or radar, or is that not an option just with the growth that's happening?
I wouldn't say it's not an option, but it's not something that's necessarily on the radar as of now. I would say, in my personal opinion, that West Jordan could be a good candidate for that in some of the schools, but in some areas besides West Jordan, we've just got too much growth to be able to do that at this time. So that is something that we could definitely bring into the conversation when we're talking about boundary changes as well.
Okay. And then my last one is, we're working on a traffic issue over at Oakcrest Elementary, also in District Four.
Okay.
And I just want to publicly thank the principal, Mr. Pullen there, and the district. It's on a curved road, and I've emailed President Voorhees and Mr. Robinson.
It's not Oakcrest, is it?
It's Oakcrest.
Oakcrest.
Yeah, sorry.
It's okay.
Oakcrest. And so I just really appreciate the responsiveness of the Jordan School District as we try and find some ways to keep the kids safe and keep traffic moving and things like that. So I just really appreciate the Jordan School District. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
I'll pass that information on to them, but thank you for that comment. I appreciate it. And safety is our number-one concern, so.
Thank you very much for the report.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We also just wanted to quickly share with you, if we can, and we want to show you the projects that have been done within the West Jordan City at some of our wonderful schools. So we do have some information here. If you'll just go through the next.
There's a key here that...
Oh, okay. Wonderful. That's perfect. So we'll start with Copper Hills High School. We have worked on the weight room expansion, and that was primarily for safety issues. Too many students in the weight room and too many weights in the weight room, too much equipment. And then we did the auditorium sound system upgrade, commons area fill-in. And that is because they had stairs that went into the commons area. We filled that in so that that area can be used with more flexibility. They can actually wheel cafeteria tables in on that if they need to because of the overcrowding. We do need that additional space. Press box concession stand and outside restrooms, new artificial turf filled and track. So here's some pictures here. We've got the extended weight room, and that is really just that last part of the building This is our new weight room. And all of you know Mr. Scott Thomas, and he's working out really hard there. We want to make sure he gets his workout in for the day. And then that is the fill-in, so it does show that we are able to move the cafeteria tables in. The students are very excited about that opportunity of maybe even having some school dances there in that area as well. And then we also have, obviously, the press box concession stands and the outside restrooms. Here's some pictures of those.
And can be used for two sports.
Yeah, and that can be used for two sports. And then we are very excited to show the new artificial turf and filled and track at Copper Hills High School. And then with the West Jordan High, we had the relocation of the main office for safety and security that has been brought to the front of the building. I'm sure most of you have seen that just by driving by. We have the HVAC and control upgrade to the south end of the building, exterior modifications to the main entrance, classroom lighting upgrade to LED and new artificial turf filled. So I'm sorry that you're not here, Mr. McConaughey. Your mom's in this picture. I don't know if you can see it. It's way back there, but I know she's very special to you.
Yes, I see her.
All right. Some more office spaces that are there up in the front for our kids' safety. That's the new hallway. And you can see where the old building ended, and that is all-new building there to the front. That is the new, well, it's not completed, thankfully, but we're still very excited about the progress that's been made there, and that should be done, I believe, by the end of October, beginning of November. We have the students there. They're very intently listening to their teacher. They're not bored in any way, shape, or form. I promise you that. But you can tell the lighting is much different than what it has been. Some more classrooms. The library is a huge, significant change from what it was last year. It was a very dark area for the students to be in, and it's very exciting to see that it's lit up now and there's more light for those students. And then the lighting down the hallway. And then the amazing new turf build. The community is very thankful for that new field. We went to the first football game there, and the community just came up and thanked us. They were so excited about having a new field for their football players. And it's actually a multipurpose field, so more of the different clubs and everybody can use that field, more than just the football players. So we have Majestic Elementary with installation of fire sprinkler system, lighting upgrade to LED, entire school carpet replacement, restrooms renovation, additional exterior lighting. That is now their hallways where they are much more bright, even the office space. It's very important for them to have the good lighting for good education. The library, the classes, the new restrooms, which desperately needed some updates. And then the West Jordan Middle School, originally opened in 1958. The new school will open fall of 2019, and the estimated cost for this is $36,374,000, which is a significant reduce in cost than some of the other buildings. That's the picture there for that. We're very excited, like I said, to see that those have gone up, the progress. Okay. So and I'll just let you know that we were able to put about $2,122,000, or 22,185,000 into the Copper Hills High School, $5,441,625,000 into West Jordan High School, and then Majestic Elementary received about $1,572,894 in improvements, with a total of $9,136,704. So we're very excited about all the projects that have gone into West Jordan this summer. A lot of hard work from the employees and a lot of hard work from the communities that have allowed us to make these improvements to their schools. Any questions?
Questions from council?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it and hope you have a wonderful evening.
You too. Item 3B, 2017 West Jordan Victim Assistance Statistical Update. David?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is the opportunity I get to show off and talk about two individuals who really don't get the recognition they deserve. They are the reason victims and individuals who are subject to crime get help in this city. Law enforcement has a responsibility, but it ends sometimes and picked up by these two ladies I'm going to introduce, Cecilia Budd, Luanne Saisem, if they could come up. And they are the reason victims get help finding protective orders, having the explanation of what's going to happen in court. And it doesn't happen without the assistance of these two ladies. The requirement, though, is that they have to tell you what they've done this year to get the grants that continue to assist our citizens. So if I can turn over to them, this is the one time they get to be seen by the council, so I want to toot their horn a little bit because they are really valuable to our office.
Thank you. Hopefully you'll never see us again. You will not need our assistance. We have, I'm Luanne Saisem, Cecilia Budd, and we have a part-time Eric Montanas, who's our victim advocate. Our mission statement is, "As advocates shall provide services to the community for crisis intervention and advocacy for victims of violent crimes. The advocate can assist with the filing of the crime victim compensation claims. The advocate can transport individuals to the police station, hospitals, family resource centers, shelters, court, and any other place for their safety. We can assist in obtaining police reports, in filling out a protective order. An advocate will keep victims well informed of their case, attend court proceedings with or without the victim, assist in preparing the victim or witness for court, including introducing the person to the courtroom, etc. During the trial, the advocate stays with the victim or witness and explains the procedure and answers all questions." During this quarter, we have contacted 256 male victims, 802 female victims. This is actually three-quarters for 2017, making for a total of 1,058 victims. 880 domestics, 23 assaults, seven sex offenses, 48 child abuse, four elder abuse, 75 stalking and harassment. We've had two survivors of homicides. Five DUIs, 23 protective order violations, two robberies, one kidnapping. 150 were victims with limited English proficiency. 20 were assisted with immigration issues. 106 on-scene crisis responses. 86 court support. 1,316 follow-up calls. 113 hot list meetings. In West Jordan, we have opportunities for volunteers, and if anybody is interested in volunteering as a victim assistance, they can call 801-566-6511. Do you have any questions?
Questions from council? Thank you for a very wonderful job that you're doing for the community. We really appreciate it.
We enjoy it. Thank you.
I'm glad you do. Item 3C, update from Economic Development Corporation of Utah. Max Backlund? May I introduce our visitors?
Sure.
Want to introduce to you Max Backlund, and he's the Public Development Director for Economic Development Corporation of Utah. And sitting down there, trying to hide a little bit, is Scott Harbertson, former mayor of Farmington, and he's currently the Community Relations Director for Economic Development Corporation of Utah. They're here just to kind of give you an update on some of the new programs that they have and maybe answer some questions that you might have.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, and Russ. We appreciate the introduction and appreciate the time to come and talk to you tonight. You should have a copy of this. This is the Development Ready Communities Program. Thank you. And we want to, first of all, say thank you to West Jordan. We have appreciated your partnership over the years. It's been a rough year. It's been a learning year for us, and we've taken what we've learned from this past year, and we've rolled it into this new program. So Public Development is actually a new department at EDC Utah. We started it about nine months ago. So previously, I was working on the business development team, where we managed the projects with companies that were looking at Utah as a possible expansion site. The Public Development Department is a little bit of a shift away from that, where we're focused more on our cities and counties and trying to help them prepare to win projects as they come down the pipeline, so. Scott back here will answer any questions if you've got any, and I can kind of walk you through a little bit about the toolbox that we've got and some of the new services that we're offering. This is a program that we feel very strongly about. We're very excited about this. We've test-piloted about 135 of these tools in 35 different communities. So we have a wide array of applications across the state of Utah. We've vetted it in a number of different situations across the state. We feel very confident that it can lead to a successful strategic plan and successful projects in the future for the community. This is really geared around helping the city staff with the capacity problem. So one of the things that I always hear when I go to a community is that there's not enough time or energy or money to respond to a lot of these requests that come in from companies or to do any kind of proactive economic development. And that can be a very frustrating process for a city to go through. And EDC Utah, one of its founding principles is really that EDC Utah is a place where we can pool resources and get access to research tools and expertise and staffing capacity that would not normally exist in any other situation. And a lot of the tools that we have developed in this new program are geared around research and marketing and strategic planning to help cities be as prepared as possible for when that big project comes down the pipeline. And one of the things that we've learned over the past year is that it's good to walk through that process with all the different stakeholders so that everybody's on board before we go through another one of those processes. So the things that we're doing in here are really important on the front end to help the city decide what direction they want to go with economic development, how they're going to do it, and what the deliverables will be from each of EDC Utah's departments. So this walks you through this pamphlet that we passed out. We'll walk you through each of the departments at EDC Utah. There's four of the main ones would be research, marketing, project management, and then public development. And it will tell you what each of those departments will deliver to a city over the next 12 months. So this is something that we feel will really help the economic development process. It will really simplify things on the city side as they try and be more proactive about their economic development, and then help us to be a better partner to you to make sure that we meet your needs as a partner moving forward. Are there any questions that I can answer? That was kind of the quick and fast version of things.
Questions from council? I just need to state, Max, that I talked to Teresa about your goal number two. I think that's a big step in the right direction from coming from a community like ours to highlight the particular items in a community that make it sellable to businesses to look at and work with EDCU to market on that potential. So I'm real impressed with specifically that goal.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Competitive advantages are a big part of economic development, and the process that we put in place is designed to really bring those to the forefront and get that information in the right hands so that you can be more successful winning projects.
Any other questions? Well, thanks. Great job.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll move now to communications. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I would like to let you know that a budget book has finally been printed. They're expensive. They're about $86 a copy. So we made a limited number of them, but it is available online. So the information is there. You should each have been provided a copy, a hard copy. If you haven't received a copy, let me know. The best part of the entire book is the back page.
It's an impressive picture, by the way.
Nothing further, sir. Thank you.
Deputy City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In economic development, we sometimes call on other departments to assist us, and sometimes we do it with plenty of notice and sometimes we do it with absolutely no notice. Yesterday, we had a situation where we had a business that's coming into town, and through no fault of ours, it was the fault of the businessperson, they had not filled in the proper paperwork they needed to get some state licensing. And we called on Marcia and we called on the police department to do the near impossible, and they were able to pull that off and meet a deadline that had to be done. And I wanted to recognize the chief and his department for going above and beyond the call of duty to help us in that situation. So I just wanted to recognize him for that. Thank you. That's all I had.
City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I guess the only thing I'd say is we had a new prosecutor start on Monday. Summer Shelton came to us from Pleasant Grove City, and we're glad to have her. I think that's all.
Thank you. Scott?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Ryan Clay?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Bill Piper?
Mayor, we had a new accountant start this week, and his name is Louis Bradley, and we're excited to have him on board. Thanks.
Thank you. Justin Stoker?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick update on some of the capital facilities that are happening right now. The Public Works Building is moving along. They've really picked up the pace on some of the masonry and are working to wrap up some of the ancillary structures to the building. With regards to the arts facility, I spoke with the architect on the arts facility this afternoon, and he's preparing bid package one, which includes all of the site work, the clearing, grubbing, grading, utilities, footings and foundations. They're preparing to submit that here in the next week or two. And they expressed some desire to hold a groundbreaking ceremony. And so I pose that to the council, whether or not that's something that interests the Mayor and City Council to do a groundbreaking for that building.
Absolutely, yeah.
And so just appreciate some direction on that, if you want to do that in the afternoons, evenings, during lunch, what day is best. So I look forward to some direction on that when to schedule that. Thank you.
Chief Sharman?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Malparie did not have anything extra to bring forward tonight. We are on the agenda with one item.
Chief Diamond?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have, just to announce, there's four new... Sorry. Didn't push the button. I thought I pushed it. Thank you. We have four new officers starting on Monday that all are certified officers already, so that should help us in the near future. We also have a budget coordinator that'll be starting on Monday as well. So we're starting to staff up. Right now, we have, we only have two or one vacancy that has not been filled with a, at least, offer letter at this point in time. So we're slowly but surely catching up.
Thank you. Council. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to point out and recognize Chuck Harbor. He's always going to bump beyond. This last week, I had a comment from a concerned citizen who was selling his home, and the purchaser was working with the city for a grant. Chuck was very quick to jump in and is working to make sure that everything goes nice and smooth, helped alleviate a lot of concerns there. As always, he's on top of things, and he usually is pretty good about staying in the background. But I really want to make it known to the rest of the council that we do have some really good staff regularly go above and beyond. Chuck is at the top of that list. That's all to Max. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. Since our last regularly scheduled council meeting, I was able to attend three ribbon cuttings, so I like to see that things, let you know that things are happening in West Jordan with our businesses. I attended yesterday the Association of Municipal Councils, and while I was there, they elected me as vice chairman, so I have a new position. And I want to welcome the Boy Scouts who are here visiting with us today. Thank you for coming. If you'd like to take a moment during citizens' comments, we'd love to hear from you. Also, I learned on the news today that you have additional competition now, that they are accepting girls in the Boy Scouts, and so girls now can become Eagle Scouts. Well, that puts a whole new face on that, won't it? Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Newton?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to mention that I attended both city plays last week, the youth theater with Fiddler on the Roof, and then the adult theater with Catch Me If You Can. And both productions were just very well done. To have these young people have that opportunity to express themselves is just, is just great. And those kids are not out on the streets creating havoc for... And those kids are not out on the streets creating havoc for Chief Diamond. They're doing good things, so appreciate that. And the adult theater down in the Little Rock church, it was as professional a show as I've seen in a long time. And if you get a chance to see it, you'll love it. It's just really fun. So thanks to everyone who's involved in all the work that goes into those.
Do you know the last night?
The fifth of the adult line and the other one I'm going up there. But I'm going this week. If you go this week, you'll get both.
Thank you.
The 12th, I think is the last day.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you. Just to take a quick second on personal privilege and welcome those from my own neighborhood here, the Scouts. It's good to have you out. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacob?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things. Welcome to the Scouts. Always good to see Scouts here at city council meeting. Already had talked previously with the Jordan School District when they were here earlier about Oak Crest Elementary School. And I also want to thank Chief Diamond and his officers for going out there a couple days just to kind of help educate some of the parents on the traffic congestion that's there. Also, just wanted to remind people that the citizens, that tomorrow night at Copper Hills High School at 6:30 is to meet the candidates for the upcoming election. So that would be good to be able to attend that. And that's all I have tonight. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move now to citizens' comment. I have two signed up to speak this evening. The first will be Frank Santiago.
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name is Frank Santiago. I'm with Waste Management. Our office is at 8652 South 4,000 West, West Jordan. I am the air public sector manager for Waste Management and I'm here representing Waste Management on behalf of Beth Holbrook. She is at another council meeting, but will be here shortly. And she'll answer any questions during your agenda item. I think it's eight, eight dash five. As you may or may not know, Waste Management of Utah is located here in West Jordan. We have been here since 1993. Each day, we have over 180 employees that show up to work in West Jordan and a number of those employees live right here in the city. Because of that, West Jordan is an especially important community. We have been hauling, we have a hauling site here as well as a MRF, a recycle facility. So you can imagine our disappointment when we were notified that our bid was considered unresponsive. Our proposal offered several options to the city and I just want to make you aware of one of them. One, Waste Management would like to do the entire contract, including hauling of garbage, recycling and green waste as specified within the RFP. Number two, we also offered an option to have all of your recyclables, both collection and processing of those materials here in West Jordan City. There is a significant benefit to keeping your recyclables here, right here in your city and getting them processed. Most notable is reduced transportation costs. Additionally, Waste Management has a reputation for honoring all its contracts as well as investing in the communities we service. Tonight on the agenda is a discussion and possible awarding of the contract and we are here because we do not feel that our proposal was unresponsive. In fact, we rated highly by the evaluation committee and significantly outscored the current provider in four out of five areas. Had our proposal been fully considered, there is no question we would have came out as the clear winner. In our industry, the initial investment to start new service in a community is significant. So that is why we stand, why it is standard for new service providers to ask for longer contracts. The reason we asked for an eight-year contract is because we wanted to bring 14 brand-new CNG garbage trucks to the city of West Jordan. Not only will that help improve your quality of service, but ultimately will have an impact on the air quality in your community. I thank you for your time this evening and we look forward to your thoughtful consideration and discussion on the agenda item and we stand ready to answer questions. And as I indicated, Beth will be here to answer questions when that comes around. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alexandra Eframo?
Mayor and council, I have a poem that I love called Courage. I did it before, but I think we need to hear it again. Let me have the courage to believe in myself, not only on the days when I'm doing great but, and nothing seems impossible, but on the days when the world looks lonely and I'm losing and the road ahead seems too hard. When I wonder if I'm brave enough, small enough, strong enough, don't let me quit. Let me have courage in myself. If no one else in the world cares or believes in me, let me have the courage to believe in myself. Again, one of my very, and you all know, pet peeves is when candidates are running for office. You know, when you run for office, I pray to heaven you don't have thin skin and you have thick skin. You're not going to be, you're not going to be dealing with nicety, nice people all the time. You're going to have people you disagree with, people you hate, but you have thick skin. And Caitlin Whitlock, I called Sandy. She has a sign up in Sandy that code enforcement in Sandy said it's a violation. It's right on the fence of Jordan River. She also has a sign on private property at 22nd 100 West. Now, I believe in the truth and I call her when I see the signs and that's really what I've been doing for the last several months. Guess what she did? She blocked me. I'm not allowed to call her on her phone. Please tell me, candidates, is that what you're going to do if you get elected and you run into a citizen that you don't feel comfy with? You're going to block him on the phone? I'm really ashamed of Caitlin Whitlock. I think it's disingenuous. I think it has, it loses integrity. And also, Mr. Riding, once again, he has.
Point of order, Alexandra. I'm okay right up at the point. When you start saying that somebody's being dishonest, that's a personal attack. You need to refrain from using.
I didn't say dishonest.
You said integrity. And so let's stay on tune. State of the facts. Don't use.
I'm sorry. That is my opinion, sir. First Amendment. Sorry. When somebody blocks your phone, that to me loses integrity. Mr. Riding still has a campaign sign on Rocky Mountain Station. They do not allow campaign signs on there. And Mr. Riding, when I called him about a question, he didn't block my phone, but he hung up on me. So here are candidates that are running for office. I don't understand.
Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' comments? Now would be the opportunity. As a reminder, you'll be allowed three minutes to speak on the subject of your choice. Please come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Melanie Sadler.
Go ahead and wait until you get to the mic. Oh, thanks.
Don't hurt my time. My name is Melanie Sadler. Address is 7446 Park Maple Drive. That's eight four zero one if you need that. So I'm calling about, or talking about the intersection of 6700 West and 7800 South, which is where I live. And I went ahead and drew a picture. So I'm not sure how many of you make it out that far west, just to describe the concerns that I have. I wasn't sure what the setup would be, so I'm going to go like this. So there's Mountain View Corner. You come up 7800 South, 6400 West, fire station up here. Oh, thank you. 6700 West. So we moved here about five years ago. We moved here in Naples early in the second phase. There are about 143 homes here. In the first phase, I was also there, 112 homes. This is what we've just called the pods. This is a high-density housing, 225 homes. There's also apartments. So that's a total of 480 homes in this area. In the last three years, maybe even two years, they have now developed this area, they're just 275 homes. They've added new homes here and I didn't count those homes. They've added homes over here. This area is now being developed. This is being developed. This is being developed. And this is being developed. Just in the neighborhood I live in, which only has outlets onto 7800 South, there are now another 275 homes. That is an increase of 60%. If you say in the morning, 755 homes with each home, if everyone is leaving, one car from each home, and there are plenty of houses that have more than one, two families at work, you have kids going to high school, you have the car pools going, all within an hour, and I'd say even like half hour to 45 minutes in the morning, we're talking 1,000-plus cars that need to get out of this neighborhood and in the evenings, that many cars coming home. With all this development here, there's more cars driving here. There are also more homes up here that now use this road. And I feel like this intersection, a two-way stop sign does not support what is needed for all the development that has gone on here. I feel like the infrastructure should resemble the amount of development that is now in our area. I also feel like this is an area where we have a lot of kids.
Can I ask you to just step over to the other side? Because that way, Council McConaughey can see it. Russ, can you just come over? As you're describing.
The kids also walk to the middle school across there. In the mornings, I take my son earlier in the morning before the crossing guard is there because he needs to go for early morning activities. And I notice he is not the only kid going there early in the morning. There are kids walking and to see those kids trying to cross that, it is a very dangerous situation for them. You have lots of cars, two-way stop. People don't understand the right-of-way is at a two-way stop and it's not safe for these kids to be walking there in the mornings before the crossing guard comes, yet it's a situation they have to deal with. And I hope you will see. Consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' comments?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I spoke in front of you guys months ago about the recycling and I just wanted to come up to say.
We need your name and address. Sorry for the record.
My name is Matt Stalzberg. I'm the general manager of A's Recycling Disposal. I'm here to speak about the matter on the business agenda to award the contract to us tonight. And I just want to let you guys know that we really feel like we've respected your wishes and the integrity of this process, the same way we did five years ago. We're a local company and when you, when your residents call in to us, they actually speak to a person that knows where West Jordan is in Utah. We have 29 families that work for us that live in this city. We take it very seriously. And we were a little bit surprised to see that we, the scoring, you know, but we respect the process while we question it. We have 30 years experience in this city and we consider ourselves to do a pretty good job. We service 12,500 homes per day in this city. I just want to tell you guys, we're really looking forward to another five years of doing business with this city. We hope that you feel the same way tonight. Anything that you decide tonight, I respect, I understand. I know it's not always an easy situation, especially this one again. But I just wanted to say thank you and I respect what you decide tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will close the citizens' comment portion of the agenda and we will move to the consent calendar. Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you. Before we move to the consent calendar, there are a couple items within the calendar itself that pose a possible conflict of interest. And although I think that I could vote without discrimination in one way or the other, I'm going to recuse myself, one of which is that happens to be my employer's on there. So let's, I'm just going to step down and just for the consent calendar vote and I'll
Councilmember Newton?
Mayor, I would move that we approve consent items A through F.
Councilmember Anderson? We have a motion by Councilmember Newton, a second by Councilmember Anderson. Discussion to the motion. See now, let's vote.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Newton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
Item 7A, public hearing item, receive public input and consider for approval, Resolution 17-199 regarding the West Jordan Police Department's application for an Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant for 2017 in the amount of $33,309. Chief Diamond?
Thank you, Mayor. This item comes up every year. It's an annual grant that we get. The amount is fixed by the federal government for what we can spend the money on and the amount of money that we have. Typically, it goes for equipment. We are still trying to work out some details on last year's where we tried to get a camera trailer, then they decided that it was a vehicle of special use, so we have to jump through some more hoops to get that after they approved it initially. This year, because of the need to replace our, some of our laptop computers while we're going to the new system, new Hexagon CAD and RMS systems, we chose to put the money toward 13 replacement laptops. The laptops are relatively expensive because they are ruggedized laptops. They have to withstand the heat of being in a patrol car and also the extreme temperatures from cold to hot, plus the vibrations and different things that happen in a patrol car. So they are ruggedized and that's why they are a little bit more expensive. Plus, we have to have touchscreens on them to operate the new system as well. So there's a little bit of extra cost in that than what we've had in the past. So with that, unless there's any questions about that grant, it does require a public hearing. The federal government requires a public hearing on that and so that's why it's before you today. Thank you. Oh, also, this is just the application. We have to have the public hearing for the application, but once we receive the award in tonight's agenda bill, it does say that if to apply for the applications and if awarded that we can accept those funds so that we don't have to do this in a two-step process. It's all in one step for tonight.
Any questions from council? I will open the public hearing for item 7A. If you're here to speak on this item, now would be the opportunity. See, now want to close the public hearing and return to the council. Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you. I move to approve the Edward Byrne Memorial JAG application.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Nichols, a second by Councilmember Jacob. Discussion to the motion? Let's vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
The vote passes seven in favor.
Public hearing item 7B, receive public input and consider for approval, ordinance 17-54 regarding amendments to the impact fees. Steve Glein?
Mayor, I've asked, as a result of Steve Glein having previously scheduled a vacation, Justin Stoker will be doing the introductions in this matter tonight. Thank you.
Justin?
Thank you, Mayor. The impact fees for the various enterprise accounts were updated earlier this year by a firm by the name of Tischler Bice. They're a nationwide renowned accounting firm that's, that has done this and they do an excellent job for us. What we found over the last year is that there were two areas where we needed to update our water impact fees. In one of those impact fees, our impact fees were based upon average daily use, but Utah state law requires us to use peak demand. And there was a conversion factor going on, but we determined that it wasn't. And there was a conversion factor going on, but we determined that wasn't accurately reflecting the spirit of the state law. The second item that needed an update was with regards to our impact fee facility plan. Based upon some council priorities, there's some changes to the water facilities that need to happen to that impact fee facility plan. So Tischler-Byss has updated their impact fee schedule with the water only to address those two concerns. Ben Griffin from Tischler-Byss has come to be able to answer any questions that you might have regarding this amendment.
Mayor, council, thanks for having me out tonight to go ahead and walk you through some of the updates that we've made to your water impact fees. Jump right into it. First, I want to talk about the differences from your current fees, essentially the reason, you know, why we need to do this, you know, after about a year. Briefly discuss your land use assumptions, the fee components, and the fee summary. So, as Justin suggested, you know, we really need to look at this again based on, you know, Utah code saying that, you know, essentially, you're going to be basing your water facilities on peak demand, and your previous fees, or technically your current fees, you know, they're based on average day demand, which is fine, it just takes longer to pay off all of that infrastructure if you're using average day demand. And, you know, after, you know, discussing with staff, we decided that, you know, it doesn't make more sense, it's more proportional, which, you know, proportionality, as you know, is, you know, one of the two principles for impact fees that, you know, that federal law suggests that we should have. So, you know, we went back and looked and basically took your two thousand and sixteen demand instead of two thousand and fifteen because we're a year further, and, you know, one, we looked at that and said, okay, well, demand increased per capita compared to two thousand and fifteen. And also, you know, really looking at the multifamily, which is the second point, you know, it just, it looked low, and part of that is due to just utility building software, and it's harder to separate demand from your multifamily development accurately. And, you know, we were unsure if, you know, it was accurately including, you know, like water need for swimming pools or irrigation, that sort of thing, or if that was, you know, really shown in your non-residential demand. So instead of breaking out demand specifically for single-family and multifamily this time, because it looks like your multifamily was low, we combined all of your residential demand into just a single residential demand factor, and then we applied the peak, peak demand factor from your most recent Water Master Plan, which basically increases everything by two and a half times. So that's going to be the, you know, the two major differences. So if you have really great eyes, you can see this, to keep this in line with your current fees, we decided to keep all of your land use assumptions the same. That way, you're not using different, you're not using different development projections and anything like that, so everything, you know, stays in line. Another thing I want to point out that, you know, to make sure that these fees stay in line with your current fees, instead of having a six-year window for only your water, we actually just kept it at a four-year. That way, when you update in four years the rest of your fees, then you also update water, and they're on the same update cycle all the time, instead of doing them, you know, separately. All right, so, again, you know, as your current fees are set up, we're doing plan-based, which says, okay, we know we're going to build these facilities, and we're going to spread this over, you know, new development or existing development. You'll, I'll point out the difference as we get in there. We're using peak gallons instead of average day gallons in our components as they were in current fees, or wells, reservoirs, and transmission lines. So we'll start off with demand and projections. As you can see at the top, instead of having a single-family and multifamily demand line, we have just all residential demand combined. So that ends up being, you know, a peak demand factor of four hundred and thirty gallons per person per day, which is, you know, how you're sizing all of your future water infrastructure anyway. And at the bottom, that shows projected demand over the next ten years. You can see in gray towards the middle, that's year four, which is essentially year six from your current fee, so it keeps it in line. That's going to be important when we get onto the next slides. And so essentially, we're saying that, you know, peak demand over the next four years would increase by about four point two million gallons per day. So we'll start with wells. You know, we have three projects included with your wells. We show, you know, additional capacity added, total cost, and we have a growth share. So we want to make sure that, you know, we're only charging future development for their share of any planned water infrastructure. So the drilling of exploratory wells, we're saying that's only fifty percent growth share. So we're asking, or we're saying that future development, you know, their share is about three point three million dollars of improvements, and that ends up being a cost per gallon of seventy-seven cents. And, you know, anytime you're looking at water impact fees, essentially, you're trying to get to a, you know, cost per gallon of capacity. And so we look at the increased capacity that these projects will add, we look at the growth cost of these, and that's how we get the seventy-seven cents per gallon of capacity. So you can see towards the bottom, the four-year increase in gallons per peak day, that's what we discussed earlier, four point two million gallons increase, while we're adding, you know, about four point three million gallons of capacity. So you won't quite pay off all this infrastructure within the four-year window, but in the very beginning of year five, that's when you pay it off. So, you know, within five years, growth is going to pay for one hundred percent of their share based on the projections. Any questions on wells before we move to reservoirs and transmission lines?
I had one question. I don't understand why drilling exploratory wells has only attributed fifty percent of the cost.
To future development?
Yeah, because development would be the reason that you would need to drill exploratory wells. Those residents that exist today and businesses that exist today are supplied with.
By current.
By current existing infrastructure, so.
Right, and if this, and without Steve to make sure this is correct, you know, I think part of the, part of this is just that, you know, your existing wells, you know, you may have fluctuations in capacity, so drilling exploratory wells, you know, actually can serve existing development as well as future development.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. So, so far, what I'm seeing, I'm liking what I'm seeing with the new set of numbers you have as compared to where they were before. My question is, for these projects and other projects, are any of these projects new in this evaluation that were not included in the last evaluation?
Yes, sir. A lot of the projects on the next slide, that reservoirs and transmissions, is renewed.
Great, and I like the way you did your division to separate or to include the multifamily in addition to the single family, because I felt the single family was carrying the big bulk and the dispersion you made, even though it was still less, which would make sense, but the changes you made, I think, are in line much better, so thank you for doing that.
Any more questions on wells? All right, so we'll take a look at the reservoirs and transmission lines. Essentially, you know, the same methodology as we use for wells, we look at, you know, any additional capacity added, look at the cost, and then we get a growth share, and a lot of that is based on, you know, figures from your master plan, and, you know, just discussions with public works and engineering. So, again, we get a growth capacity for any of those projects and a growth cost, and for reservoirs and transmission lines, we're, you know, we're adding about ten point five million gallons of capacity for future development, and the cost of that is, you know, just under twenty million, which is a little bit higher than last time, but, you know, changes in development, you know, that's why we're updating, and, you know, we need some of these projects, you know, a little faster than we thought we did last time, which is part of the reason that, you know, we have more expensive projects, or, you know, a total cost that's a little bit higher than last time, just the acceleration of those projects. So, again, a dollar ninety-one per gallon, again, if we're looking at it on this four-year window to stay in line with your current fees, you know, you only need about four point two million gallons of capacity, but when you're building reservoirs, that sort of thing, you, you know, you're going to build a little bit larger than you need and use that. That way, you're not reacting to saying, oh, you know, we don't actually have any capacity right now. You always want to make sure that you have, you know, a little bit extra in case it takes, you know, a little longer or, you know, to build, or, you know, if your development really, really takes off, you know, even faster than, you know, you've seen recently, you want to just make sure that you have a little excess capacity. So in this, you know, we're saying, you know, building about ten point five million gallons, which means that it's going to take right at ten years to pay all that off. Again, future development will pay one hundred percent of the growth cost of that based on the impact fees. So any questions with the reservoirs and transmission lines?
Well, I agree with your comment, but again, I would, other than the pressure-reducing valve station number one that needs to be relocated, I don't see the, just the fifty-seven percent cost being for growth on the sixteen-inch transmission line and the three-million-gallon reservoir, and the same on the zone three, four-million-gallon reservoir and Old Bingham Highway Transmission Project. I think, in my opinion, those four items for sure are attributable only to growth, nothing to the existing residents. So I would just like to interject that. I don't think, I think they're a hundred percent growth. Not, not the PRV station, they wear out, and moving one obviously is what's needed. So I see the growth share is twenty percent there, but the other four items, I disagree with this table.
Yeah, I think a lot of that is related to redundancy in the system to make sure that you can move water around through zones. Oh, without having my notes in front of me, I can't confirm that.
Okay, I just wanted, Councilmember Newton has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm trying to put my head around this. In January, you came out with a report. How long was that supposed to cover? What period of time was that supposed to cover?
It was a six-year window.
Six?
Through two thousand and twenty-one.
Six years?
Correct.
Okay, and then seven months later, we have another report, and how long is that supposed to cover?
To keep it in line with your current fees, it's through two thousand and twenty-one as well.
So that's still six years?
Uh, well.
Five years.
Because we started the last, at the, believe, end of two thousand and fifteen, or the beginning of two thousand and sixteen.
Okay, so help me understand, then, during that seven months, we added, added construction projects or added wells or?
Yes, sir.
Because what we had talked about in January wasn't adequate for the next six years?
I think just sort of some of the development patterns changed enough where, you know, some, some different projects needed to be added, and some of the projects that were in your current IFAP need to be removed.
Okay, but what I'm trying to find out is, is those extra projects are needed in the next five years to cover the, the growth in the next five years?
That's correct.
All of it?
At least some portion of these projects will be needed within the next four years. Like I said, you want to build a little excess capacity each well, or, I'm sorry, each reservoir to grow into it.
My problem with this is that then the people who are building in the next five years shouldn't take the whole burden of, of that growth if, if, if that's to carry us beyond that point, because if my numbers are correct, this is a seventy-seven percent increase in those impact fees, a tremendous hit to, to the whole structure, and I'm just not sure how this all relates. We absolutely want the present citizens and the present users not to pay for something that, that is attributable to growth, but we also don't want to charge those that are coming in, in the next five years, more than what they should pay. If, if we decide to build more, more tanks and more structures upfront, that, we can do that and, and borrow money to, to pay it off later, but we can't charge these people now unless, unless it's attributable to what their needs are, the way I see it. Now, maybe you can help me understand.
Yeah, so actually, as you can see in the gray box at the bottom, it's saying that, you know, any, any additional capacity built to serve future development is actually going to take about ten years to completely pay off, and that's just because, you know, you're, you're building about ten point five million gallons of additional capacity for future development, and, you know, to reach that amount, it's going to take about ten years, but you want to go ahead and build any wells, you know, before you actually need them or before you're over capacity. And so, you know, in four years, when it's time to do another update, anything that you've built and, you know, you have remaining capacity on, then instead of doing a plan-based approach, we'll just switch it to a cost recovery approach, and any remaining capacity gets charged to development for the next six years.
But we can't charge the development, you know, for the next four years for, for, beyond the capacity which they need? And that's what it seems like we're doing.
Yeah, so actually, you know, we're, we're looking at, you know, the, the future growth capacity, the future cost of that, and we just get a cost per gallon, and then we apply that cost per gallon to the demand by each type of development.
Okay, so second question, then. You said we switched from a, an average demand to a peak demand.
Correct.
Did we change the infrastructure? Did we increase the infrastructure to accommodate a peak demand rather than average demand?
Yeah, so you're actually sizing your infrastructure now based on peak, and that's what the Utah code requires.
Okay, you're right, but in the last seven months between, between those two studies, did we, did we upsize everything or did we upsize things to?
No, sir.
Then how, how can we justify a change in that, in those charges if we haven't changed our infrastructure?
So, I mean, we could continue using average demand, which would lower the fee, but it would just take a lot longer to recover that, that amount.
Hey, I'm not worried about the time. I'm worried about charging our new residents and our businesses the proper amount for, for the impact that they, that they, that they are causing, and, and I'm not sure that this does that, so I'll leave it at that for now.
All right. Any other questions?
Let me just understand, so the growth related is actually nineteen million, and the four-year increase, you have, the four-year share of cost is eight million of that, is that? Is that how it?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's how you're justifying the next four years? Is you're not taking the whole nineteen million and amortizing it? We're going to take another look at it within four years and adjust up or down? Is, is that the method that's been used?
Exactly, the remaining, you know, twelve million or just under twelve million would be repaid by the next six years of development. So after, you know, the four-year development update, the next six years of development would then pay off the remaining capacity on these wells, sorry, these reservoirs.
I just wanted to understand the methodology that was. Did you have another question? Councilmember Jacob?
Yeah. Sorry, I wasn't sure if Councilmember Newton had another question. Did state law change between January and now? So why was the study in January not calculated off of peak demand and this one is?
Right, so you can, you can do it either way, and, you know, we, like I said, we could leave the fees at average day demand, and, you know, it would just take longer to pay off because it would show that, you know, everyone is using a, a. because it would show that, you know, everyone is using a, a smaller share of, you know, any water infrastructure, uh, which is, you know, defensible and acceptable. Um, but, you know, again, you're going to be collecting fees for, for much longer and it's, you know, arguably less proportionate.
So does state law require us to go off of peak demand or does state law allow us to go off of average daily demand?
So you have to size your water production facilities. Let me make sure I'm saying that correctly. Yes. Yeah, there it is. Um, sorry, your, your water system source capacity should be, uh, should be based on, uh, peak day demand.
Okay.
And so to keep everything consistent.
And this is not new? This is the way it's been?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. I will now open the public hearing for item 7B. If you're here to speak on this item, now is the opportunity. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and return to the council. Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you. Mayor, I just want to kind of follow off of your lead on what you were saying before. Um, I just have three points. Um, the average versus peak demand, I'm a, I'm a fan of going toward the peak demand idea. Um, that's what we're, our fares from the Water District are based on, peak demand. I just think that just is a good way to be consistent. The second thing is the ratio of the single-family versus fam- or, uh, single-family versus multifamily. I like the idea of, of making some kind of uniformity there. I mean, they're not exactly the same. The fees are different, but I like just the change that's being proposed, at least the ratio. Um, number three, the gross share. That's the question I think we're all talking about. Um, and that's where I, I completely agree with what you're saying is, I don't know what number that is to make that right. Um, but in my opinion, anything that needs to be developed to support growth needs to pay 100%. Now, if we can come up with a formula, and maybe that's been considered in here, maybe it's being considered in these numbers and we just need to have a little bit more information. Um, uh, but to me, I mean, if, if we're building a, a new pump to satisfy the new growth, it sounds like new growth needs to pay for the new pump. Um, because today we have enough water, the way we are, without touching anything. Now granted, now if we're going to build the pump so that we have some more redundancy for the rest of the system, maybe that's a different take. Okay, maybe growth doesn't need to pay for all that. But I just need some more information with each one of those line items to kind of have an idea what's behind that number. Um, but with that, I like the idea of making sure that growth pays for, for, uh, new development. That's, that's just it. The development should, I don't, I just don't like seeing the idea of all these 4-million-gallon tanks coming up. And if we do have the need for the current residents who are here now for an additional 4-million-gallon up there for redundancy, then I'm all about it. Let's share it. Let's share that cost. But if that's not what it is, let's not.
Councilmember Newton?
Um, yeah, thank you. And, and I agree with you totally, um, Councilmember. Um, I would like to move that we table this, uh, item till the first meeting in November so that we can get some more information, and quite frankly, so I can understand it.
Second. We have a motion, uh, by Council, Councilmember Newton and a second by Councilmember Nichols. Discussion to the motion. I'll just, I'd just state that I'm in favor of raising the impact fees. There's no question. I think that it's been lagging far behind our development, but I agree that we need to, uh, quantify these numbers a little tighter, in my opinion. So I will be supporting the motion. Councilmember Burton?
I, I'm in favor of supporting the motion as well. I just wanted to make sure that as we table it and bring it back the next meeting, that we don't postpone the date of when we implement these. And I have a question on that. I noticed the date is the second Tuesday in January. I'm wondering why we won't do it on January 2nd, the first Tuesday in January instead of the second week? Is there?
Councilmember Nichols?
Yeah, I don't know if it's, uh, Labor Staff would have the answer for that. I, it's the 90-day limit. So once we pass the new rate, it's a 90-day, starts a 90-day calendar. That's how I've always understood it.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Newton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Roff?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Vote passes seven in favor.
Public hearing item 7C, received public input and considered for approval, ordinance 17-55 regarding vacating the northern portion of Winthorpe, Winthrop Circle adjacent to lots 45, 46, 47 of Vista West Plat A to facilitate expansion of the 90th South Bangater Highway. Scott?
Thanks, Mayor. Members of the council, as I'm sure all of you are very aware, UDOT is, uh, really doing a lot of construction there on Bangater Highway, uh, at the intersections of 90th South and 70th South. And, uh, in order to accommodate those flyovers, they needed additional real estate. And per state law, uh, it, uh, the state law requires local municipalities and if we're vacating right-of-way, uh, to hold a public hearing and to, uh, make a, make the motion via ordinance. And so that's why you see this item and that in the following two items. Um, basically, I've got a couple maps here, but the vacation amounts to clipping, uh, portions of existing cul-de-sacs. So not much, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have any utilities that would be impacted by this?
There will be a few that will have to be capped and stubbed. Uh, I don't have the details, but again, this, uh, this particular item that you see in front of you is the, the biggest, uh, vacation, and that's just over 10,000 square feet. So we're not talking about a, a huge amount of utilities. Uh, a lot of these homes are going to be taken. Uh, and so the, the utilities stubbed out to those existing properties will be removed as part of the construction. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, it, it did. Thank you. I guess the follow-up would be, um, I'd be curious as to cost for us to do that, but that's really a separate question I can take up later with other work. That's not going to impact my vote on this one. So that'll be good for now. Thank you, Scott.
Okay.
Thanks. I will open the public hearing for item 7C. If you're here to speak on this item, now is the time. Please.
Mayor and council, Alexandria Framan, 3735 Jud Circle. I live two blocks from this incredible, uh, thing that's going on. I just want to say, you know, uh, if, if little kids want to learn about construction, they need to come and pass that intersection because it's really awesome. I can't believe what they're doing. I mean, I'm not an engineer, but, uh, I mean, I, anything I can do to say, yes, go ahead and help them is just awesome. I just think they're doing a magnificent job. But even though I'm not an engineer, just looking at it is just massive. And so little kids should come by and get a lesson because in construction, if that's what they want to do later in life is to become a, an engineer or just dig ditches, just come and look. It's just amazing. Anyway, I just want to compliment them. It looks terrific what they're doing. Anyway, I'm impressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing for item 7C and return to the council. Councilmember Newton?
Mayor, uh, I move that we approve ordinance, uh, 17-55.
We have a motion by Councilmember Newton, a second by Councilmember Nichols. Discussion to the motion? Let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey? Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Aye.
Mayor Roff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Vote passes seven in favor.
Public hearing item 7D, received public input and considered for approval, ordinance 17-56 regarding vacating a portion of 3535 West adjacent to 7,000 South to facilitate expansion of 7,000 South Bangater Highway. Scott?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, this is similar to the last item, even less of a vacation. We're looking at 196 square feet. And so, uh, to maybe, uh, answer the utility question, I know for a fact it's not, utilities are not being impacted with this particular vacation. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions? I will open the public hearing for item 7D. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing for item 7D and return to the council. Councilmember Newton?
Um, Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance 17-56.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Newton, a second by Councilmember Nichols. Discussion to the motion? Let's vote.
Mayor Roff?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Vote passes seven in favor.
Final public hearing item 7E, received public input and considered for approval, ordinance 17-57 regarding vacating a portion of Angel East, Angel C, Angel C Circle adjacent to 7,000 South to facilitate expansion of 70th South Bangater Highway. Scott?
Thanks, Mayor. This is the last vacation needed, uh, for, for that construction at 70th and Bangater. This is the south, uh, east corner, and we're looking at approximately 352 square feet, uh, needed to be vacated. And we recommend that the council approve this ordinance as well.
I will open the public hearing for item 7E. Anyone wishing to speak? I will close the public hearing for item 7E and return to the council. Councilmember Anderson?
I'll move to approve ordinance 17-57 vacating a portion of Angel C Circle.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Anderson, a second by Councilmember Burton. Discussion to the motion? Let's vote.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Roff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Newton?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
The vote passes seven in favor.
Business item 8A. Discussion and possible action regarding financial outcome regarding the Western Stampede event. Brian, before I turn the time over to you, this has been a much awaited day for me to get this report. Um, two years ago, the council had the intestinal fortitude to raise the purse on the rodeo. And I think what we're going to hear now is the benefit of, and the wisdom of doing that. So, Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. That's correct. Um, as we close out the season, the event season, um, since winter's shortly around the corner, um, we wanted to bring to you, and we're going to try to do this with a lot of the bigger events, bring to you the financial outcome of, uh, at the end of the event. I know this is an important one to council, mayor and council. Um, so we've put together a, Ashley's compiled a great presentation on the financial report, uh, just for the rodeo, um, and the sponsorships that we, she was able to, uh, obtain for the rodeo. So I'll turn the time over to Ashley, um, and she can go over the presentation. Thank you.
Mayor and city council, thank you for having me. Appreciate it. I was sure being here. No, we are. Okay, I just said thank you. So, for the record. Um, I'd like to start off, um, after our successful Western Stampede rodeo, we obviously wanted to present to you a financial report, which will include the following: the revenue and expenditures with a three-year comparison, the salary and wages of those who worked the actual event, and the total net gain or loss for the event. In the presentation that was sent out last week, it did have a four-year comparison, um, with 2014 included in that. After meeting and consulting with our finance department, the revenue for 2014 was reported in the old accounting system. So with that being said, I will be showing you the comparison with three years, starting with 2015. As you can see, the revenue has increased year by year. In 2017, we had a record-breaking number of $126,943 in ticket sales and $69,350 in sponsors specifically for the rodeo. After looking at the breakdown for each account by year, here's the total revenue for 2015, 16, and 17, with a total of $203,593. Now with the 1804 rodeo expenditures, here's a breakdown by account in each year. At this eve, as this event straddles two budget years, we were very specific in how we tracked our numbers and our budget. We kept every invoice, receipt, and ticket that was related to the rodeo and filed it into a binder. After the rodeo, we sorted the receipts into groups, and those groups were the account line items that they were paid out of. Once we completed this step, we also met with our finance department and cross-referenced every purchase that was coded to the 1804 account, then checked our records to make sure that they matched up. After looking at the exact breakdown for each account by year, here's the total expenditures of 2015, 16, and 17, with a total of $183,207. Here are the rodeo salary and wage totals for those who worked the rodeo. In 2015, the total cost for the fire, police, parks, and events was just over $9,000. 2016 was just over 11 and close to that in 2017. In your packets, it does show a detail of each department that worked the event for your reference for 2017. Keep in mind that these numbers were only, or, sorry, keep in mind these numbers only include wages that were coded by the employee to the rodeo. Wages were calculated at time and a half and does not include benefits. The amount doesn't include time spent on the events as part of additional responsibilities unless it were coded to events. Here's the rodeo revenue and expenditure side by side from 2015 to 2017. The expenditure line does include the total expenditures by account as well as the total salary and wages that were coded to the event. As you can see, the revenue has increased by year to year, and our goal is to continue to increase the revenue for future years. Now I would like to show you the total net gain and net loss from 2015 to 2017. I am proud to say that this last year, we had a net gain of $9,203. I was able to start reaching out to sponsors early in the year, earlier in the year, in which I believe we had the highest number of sponsors for this rodeo to date. As we are in the process of hiring a new volunteer and events coordinator, I plan to start reaching out to current sponsors and new sponsors starting, um, in December by the end of the year. We hope to build our partnership with many more to increase the revenue more than the 9,000 this year. At this time, I would like to publicly thank Nate Gedge, our Western Stampede Rodeo Chair, who is here tonight, and our Western Stampede Committee. They are a very dedicated and loyal committee that we, as a city, are very lucky to have. I would also like to thank Bill Piper and his department for their continuous help, Kim Wells for sharing her knowledge and willingness to help answer a million questions that I had throughout the year, the public work staff for their continued help, and of course, the Parks Department for being the backbone to the rodeo. Last but not least, I would like to thank you, Mayor and City Council, interim City Manager David Bricky, and Deputy City Manager Russ Wall for your continued support in making our rodeo bigger and better every year. I'm excited to elevate the sense of community and start preparation for the upcoming year for another good rodeo. If you have questions, I would love to answer them or hear any comments.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a question, just some comments. So Ashley, thank you. Brian, thank you. Nate, thank you. And please pass that on to all the rest of the staff who was there one way or another. So fire, if you could pass that on chief, and please, if you pass that on chief, and all the volunteers, there were several volunteers, if you pass the thanks on to all of them. I think you did a fantastic job, and you controlled the weather well, and it all worked out good. So thank you very much. It was a great event.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you. Yes, just echo that. Nate, thank you. I know, I was really concerned for one. When Nate moved from the city, I'm like, oh, no, what's going to happen to Western Stampede? And thanks, Nate. Really appreciate you helping out. But the next comment, I actually have a question.
Okay.
Conspicuously, the volunteer barbecue is missing on the budget. Are we planning on having one?
This year, we are not. We are in the process of building our volunteer program, so that will be added out of another account. As of right now, I don't believe we had any budget in there for this year.
Can we change that? I don't, maybe we put Nate on the spot. Is the committee interested in having a barbecue? Because I would be interested in having a budget change if we need to do that. Do you think the committee would be interested at this point doing it, even though it's late? Can we put that on agenda as a budget item if we have to? If not, could we just do that? Would the council be amenable to that idea? Fine. Awesome.
Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. I also just want to echo and echo what's been said. The rodeo was about as perfectly organized as I've seen an event, and I've done events previously, not to this scale. But I just want to thank Brian and our fire and police for just a well-executed event this year, and look forward to many, many more great ones. That's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question as well.
Okay.
And again, congratulations. Well done. Good job.
Thank you.
I'm happy to see how it's running, and the Fourth of July celebration's growing and getting better every year, and I love it. I would really like to see the numbers for the rest of the Fourth of July events, the whole stampede as a large group. But what, in your opinion, what do you attribute the decrease in cost to this year? I know its cost went down. And the increase in revenue, other than sponsorship you mentioned, was there anything else that drove revenue this year that was something we can learn from? And what reduced costs? And how did we do that?
So for your first question, in reducing costs, this year, we were able to have a close relationship with the committee and being able to monitor the dollar amounts that were spent, and kind of having everything on a budget, not just using money that we have. So I would say that's how we were able to lower that dollar amount, was just having a better, close eye on the budget and what was available to use. To answer your second question, in the revenue, sponsors was a huge part, and sixty-nine thousand dollars for the rodeo, as well as ticket sales. So ticket sales, obviously, I'm hoping to increase as the years come on, and hoping to sell out every night. I think that will help in the revenue as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. So a couple things. First of all, repeat what everyone else has said, and thank you very much to the committee. Nate Gedge did fantastic. And I talked with him a little bit semi-joking about how I would be more than happy to sponsor a resolution codifying that he cannot leave the committee. I think he did some fantastic jobs. Thank you. As I'm looking at the numbers, a couple little things. Well, I'll talk to you about presentation a little bit later. There's some things that might help make it a little bit more clear. One of the things I'm looking at this was the publicity change from twenty-three thousand five hundred last year to just seventy-two hundred this year. So it's like we're only spending a third on publicity, but we're seeing more overall revenue. So I think a lot of that can be attributed to the work of the committee, and I'm very happy to see that we're able to better use some of those funds. One of the other things that I'm looking at on there is royalty. And this year seems a little bit different. Royalty seems to be involved with the council a little bit more outside the revenue as well. We've seen royalty at some of the ribbon cuttings. I would be interested in discussing possibly increasing that, because I think that really adds something to the public events that the city has if we work with royalty beyond just the rodeo. So next time budget comes up, I'd like to talk about that one. Other than that, the only other thought is if Ashley thinks she can try and sell out every night, we're probably close to the point where we need to talk about potential modifications and improvements to the venue, potentially to add some more seating. I know there's some safety things that are out there. But if she thinks she can sell out, I would like to see what we can do to add some more seating to make it a little more challenging for her. So that's a conversation for another day. But I just want to kind of plant that seed. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'd just like to state that Councilmember McConaughey and myself are lucky enough to work with the committee, and they have done a fantastic job with the leadership of Nathan Gedge. And I'd just like to congratulate Ashley on her new job title as well. So thanks to you for, I was able to attend a couple of the business meetings, and you did a wonderful job. That's why we came out in the black this year for the first time ever.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I've worked with the rodeo for fourteen years now, and first time we've ever been in the black. So pat yourself on the back and thank the committee for everything.
Will do. Thank you.
Appreciate it. My understanding is item B has been pulled from the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, council. I will attribute the suggestion to seek out such sponsorship to my eighteen years living in the Summit County portion of the state of Utah that just sometimes doesn't think these things all the way through. So I think we need to have a council consideration after maybe another year of seeing how we progress as a city and as a rodeo. And as a suggestion, I would ask that this be tabled for one year so that perhaps it can be reconsidered after next year's rodeo. I don't want any thought that it would be included for this coming rodeo. I just don't. Excuse me, I don't know if you heard that. I don't think beer sales at this rodeo are appropriate.
Do we need a motion to table, do you think? Or just we'll just bring it back in here?
If you wanted to make the motion, but you don't have to. If you pull it off now or just let it not take action, we'll know that it's going to be put back on someday in the future.
So no action? No action does that effectively? Item eight C, discussion and possible action regarding resolution seventeen dash two hundred, increasing the purse for the two thousand eighteen Western Stampede PRCA rodeo from forty-seven thousand to seventy-five thousand. Brian Clay?
Thank you, Mayor, council. As we move forward in planning the next year's events, we want to make them bigger and better. We want to draw world champion cowboys to our rodeo. We compete currently with Oakley Rodeo. After talking to our stock contractor, Servi, which is one of the top stock contractors in Utah, after talking to him, it's time we need to raise our purse to be in somewhat of a competitive mode with the other rodeos that we compete with, so we can get some of these world-class riders into our rodeo, which increases ticket sales in the long run. So after consulting with them, they suggested we raise it twenty-eight thousand. And when you raise the purse, you have to raise them evenly, if I'm not mistaken, right, Ashley? And so we opted to raise them to twenty-eight thousand, increase in the purse. So we were at forty-seven thousand. We want to increase to seventy-five thousand. Ashley has further information on that, if you have further questions. But that's what we're trying to do, is get some world-class cowboys in here, riders. We have the stock contractor that's amazing, and we need to keep him on board, too. So this is just moving forward and making things better. Thank you.
Actually, for the first time in the last two years, we've had world champion cowboys at the West Jordan rodeo. And so we're talking about increasing more of the competitive cowboys to come here. And since we had Servi Rodeo come to the city, we've increased the quality of the cowboys that have come. And I would just recommend that the council listen to our staff and listen to Servi and raise it. And it's a trust thing. We did it two years ago. We got in the black. I'm asking for the council, it's my opinion that we should follow that direction and take the next leap. And I believe we'll have rodeo over the year, possibly next year. That's my opinion. I would make that a motion, that we raise the purse from forty-seven thousand to seventy-five thousand. Second? We have a motion by Mayor Roff, a second by Councilmember Newton. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Burton first.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, do we, or maybe this is to you, Brian, do you feel that our increase on ticket sales was as direct result or a partial result of having better cowboys at our rodeo?
Yes, I do. There's a lot of people that follow rodeo, that follow the riders. I mean, you get world-class riders in here, you're going to have higher ticket sales. I truly believe that.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. That was much the same kind of line of questioning that I had, but I'll kind of expound a little bit. Have we heard from the cowboys that we've had in the last couple of years, these better contestants in the rodeo, have we heard from them, their overall feeling of the experience? Are they coming now more, and this could be for Ashley, too, sure. Are they coming here more because, just because of the purse? Are they just chasing money? Or are they coming to West Jordan because we're just really nice and we have Ashley?
I appreciate that. A big drive for the cowboys is money. That's what they're in the business for. I do feel that our rodeo is family-driven in what they're wanting to be a part of and wanting to bring their families to be a part of, because it is a sense of community. And if I'm, I might be, I believe I'm correct on this, but we do have quite a few cowboys from West Jordan that end up participating in our rodeo. World champions do search for rodeos. A lot of the time, it's not specifically for the money, but it's the venue that they're going to, and it's the crowd that they're performing for. So I do think that they are looking for money, but I also believe that they're looking for a venue that is a great crowd to perform for.
Excellent. Thank you. And maybe Brian can answer this. Where does this put us, if this increase is approved? Where does it put us in relation to the other rodeos, maybe in the state or those that we're specifically in competition with? Because I imagine that a cowboy can go a lot of different places as far as.
You're correct. Right now, we are the sixth lowest.
Out of how many?
Twenty-one.
So we're fifteen out of twenty-one?
Yeah.
Fifteen out of twenty-one. And where would this increase put us?
I'm just looking at the list here.
Well, he's looking. I'd just like to, Ashley, a lot of the cowboys follow Servi as well, right? I didn't want to put words in your mouth, but is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Are we?
Oh, sorry. Right now, they are in the top five nominated for stock contractor of the year, and the cowboys are the ones that vote on that. So Servi and Binion himself are very well-known in the rodeo world and very well-respected. So they do follow his stock, because it is a well-raised stock.
Okay. Does the purse go to Servi at all? Does the purse follow the stock contractor? Or does the purse go to the cowboys?
Goes to the cowboys, but the cowboys come for the stock contractor because of the stock.
Okay. So if we have, if we keep the same stock contractor, then by virtue of, I mean, just going down that road, the cowboys will come to follow the stock contractor, those that are driven by stock contractors, the cowboys will follow the stock contractor?
Yes.
And our contract with the stock contractor is not dependent on what the size of our purses?
Correct. To answer your question, you would be number thirteen, and it would be above Oakley Rodeo. And Oakley is who we compete with with the days of our rodeo, and their total purse and payout is seventy-two thousand.
Okay. What number is Oakley on the list?
Oakley would be twelve. So we would be right above them.
Or thirteen? This would put us at thirteen?
This would put us at thirteen. So if you go from lowest to highest.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Currently, we're at the low end as number six. In raising the purse, it would bring us to thirteen, which would be over twelve.
Okay. I counted.
No, you're fine.
I think number one is best.
Right, right.
My bad. Thank you for the explanation. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob? The motion was made by Mayor Roff to approve the resolution. It was seconded by Councilmember Newton.
No.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Roff?
Yes.
Vote passes six to one in favor.
I'd like to make a motion for a five-minute recess, five minutes only. We still have a long night ahead of us, so five minutes. We have a motion by Mayor Roff, a second by Councilmember Burton. Discussion to the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
How you doing? It's good to see you. Really good.
Thank you, Brian.
How you doing?
I want to recognize we have Representative Forty-three, Cheryl Acton.
Who's she?
Cheryl Acton, primary representative, from the House of Representatives.
Oh, really?
That's her, we got.
What's her name again?
Cheryl Acton.
Acton?
District Forty-three. Your district, our district, and I.
Our district, yeah, I didn't know who she was. I wasn't involved in any of that.
Business item eight D, discussion and possible action regarding a solid waste contract. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor, council. When this matter first appeared on the agenda, it resulted in several contacts from all parties involved, both in the bid process. Those contacts left me concerned enough about the bid process that I wanted to investigate it more thoroughly. As a result of that investigation, there is a memorandum, a legal memorandum protected under attorney-client privilege, that the city attorney's office issued to the council. I think at this point, everybody on the dais has had a chance to see it. Additionally, today, there was another email sent out from the city attorney's office and a response from Paul Dodd. Based on that fact, um, I think it's fair to say that both sides who are interested in this particular issue have in fact retained lawyers. Those lawyers have made representations about what their clients' interests are and what their concerns are. I think there is a very realistic probability of litigation involved in this decision, whatever the city council decides to make. With that said, um, I think we've given you your potential realities if you decide it one way or another. With that final concluding comment, I'd like to, uh, provide you an opportunity, if you want to ask questions of Mr. Dodd specifically, or, uh, ask you which direction you'd like to proceed.
I have one question for our city attorney, if I could. Um, the city under this RFP process has the right to reject any or all bids. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Without threat of any litigation?
Well, obviously, doesn't mean we won't, uh, won't be sued for the, that decision we make, but the law and our RFP specifically stated that we do have the right to reject any and all bids. Um, so that is definitely within our legal rights to do it. There, I assume, could be arguments made as to this specific case under these specific facts, that they may raise some questions as to the legality of that, but I believe that it is, it is legal.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, question for the attorneys as well. With the, uh, the fact that, that both, uh, contractors, potential contractors have retained counsel and, and the, the word litigation is being thrown around, how appropriate would it be to table this and discuss it in closed session to decide on a strategy legally speaking, uh, as far as litigation is concerned? Um, I'm just wondering how much I should say in public about this. I definitely have an opinion on what I think the city should do, but I'm wondering what I should say in open meeting with the threat of litigation on the table before we discuss it in closed session. Does that make sense?
I think at this point, um, the threat of litigation would be relevant as to which decision is made by the city council. I think making a decision is broken down into two parts. Uh, your first decision is, one, are you going to reject all bids? If that is your decision or a question you're going to entertain, it sort of negates the second portion of the considerations tonight. If you do not reject all bids, then you will vote on whether or not to approve a contract with the one bid that was deemed responsive. Once that decision is made, one way or the other, I think I would prefer to go back into closed session then and give you advice based on that decision, because prior to that, I might be guessing as to what is the city council's final decision.
I move to reject all bids due to the RFP process in which the city turned in a proposal after the city council instructed management not to. Councilmember Burton?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Mayor Rolfe, a second by Councilmember Burton. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Newton?
Um, let, let me express my feelings in this. We, we have in life, uh, legal rights and opportunities. We also have moral obligations. Um, let me tell you how I feel about this. I, I believe that there were some problems with the way we handled it, about communication, about not knowing what was going on with the industry. Um, that being said, there was a bid package put, put out with specifications, and, uh, uh, all the, uh, all those who wanted to submit bids with those specifications could. Um, as it ended up, only one of them ended up with, with, uh, fulfilling that, that specification. Um, they did so with a, um, knowing that there would be, that it was competitive bid. They did not know that, uh, that one of the other bids would be unresponsive. Um, but so they, they, uh, put forth a competitive bid. And I think because that bid was competitive, you know, um, in, in the beginning, that we should honor that bid and move ahead with that. If, if, if we reject that, we are, we are saying that, uh, um, we, we, we reject the idea that, uh, or, or we, there, there are other considerations that we could make, but, but the fact is that we've been months now in, in letting this hang on. Uh, I believe we should go ahead and accept the bid. And then, in, in the next, during the interim five years, we look at where the industry is, what's happening, and make sure that we have better communication and better understandings, and maybe even better bid processes. Um, but I cannot support the, uh, the motion for that reason.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a quick question for staff and then a comment. Um, this was put out as an RFP, a request for proposal, correct? Uh, could you briefly just explain the difference between an RFP, a request for proposal, and a, an RFQ, or another, another, uh, way of soliciting bids? Um, what, what's the main difference there? I, I think I know, but I, you guys are the pros.
So, obviously, I'm not the purchasing agent, but the RFP, RFQ process, request for bids, they all have different statutes under Utah code that govern, uh, how that process, uh, takes place. Um, there are some similarities in each one of those, there are some, some differences. Um, one of the differences with the request for proposals is generally when you have, uh, some type of service that, for example, you can't do just a construction project under the request for proposal bid, because you, those are usually set aside for a, a type of service that needs to have more explanation as to what's going to be going on in the services provided. Um, it gives a little bit more leeway to, to explain those different types of services and what you're gonna get. So that is one of the distinctions with the request for proposals, and this was done under RFP process. Um, I don't know if that answers.
So, yeah, let me...
It's not just a mo, it's not just a number that's given for, like a request for code. The, the proposal that is submitted is lengthy, um, has a lot of information on how they're gonna do the different, uh, you know, services that are requested.
Right. So, for example, this is not, not the case in this particular instance, but for example, if we were bidding out a garbage contract like this, not to say the contract is garbage, I gotta be careful how I say it, it's a solid waste removal contract, uh, like this. And, uh, we said, we want a solid waste removal proposals, uh, we think it should be, we think it should look like this, you submit us a proposal, and somebody comes back with a proposal and says, hey, I can not only do your solid waste, but I can also do your recycling and your green waste, and I can, you know, pick up your dirty computers and, and a few other things, and here's my proposal. I'll include all this other stuff. And company B comes in and says, well, you just said garbage, so I'm just gonna bid on garbage. Um, is that, would that be an appropriate response? So, in, in my opinion, or in my experience, I've written a lot of proposals in my career. Um, a request for proposal kind of gives more leeway to the respondent, whereas a request for quote, all of that, all the determinations are put out by the requister. So, is that, is that right? Like, on, on a request for proposal, the responses that come back can be, can vary from what was put out, because it's a proposal.
Yeah. I, I think the concern is that when we set the parameters of the proposal, we set the parameters of which that proposal needed to look like. Uh, and that, um, proposal that came back from the two sides, one complied with the request and one did not.
Okay, was there dialogue between either party and the city before the proposals were submitted regarding the point on which they differed?
Yes, there was dialogue. Specifically as to the reason why it was deemed non-responsive, there were specific questions asked, um, prior to the proposals being submitted. Those questions were answered, um, by West Jordan, and those answers were sent out to not just the party that asked the question, but to all parties who were part of the process. And, uh, those answers and responses were correct under what we have requested under the proposal, and the proposal that was ultimately submitted and deemed non-responsive didn't comply with the answers that were, that were provided when those questions were asked.
Okay, have those questions and answers been provided to the council? I don't think I've seen those.
You did receive those.
The, the questions and answers? I know I saw the proposal, and I know I saw the responses to the proposal, but I don't know if I saw any interim communication about that.
Those are attached with the proposals. Um, and those proposals that were emailed out today to you would have had those questions and answers at the back of those.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. My comment is, to explain why I'm putting the way I am, I am not using the threat of litigation to make my decision. I am using my conscience and looking at it as a fairness attribute and making the best decision I can. I've read all the information that's been emailed to me from the attorneys and other staff members to help me get that basis for the information. So with the information I've been given, and not taking litigation into account, but taking in what I think is best for the city and for the circumstances is how I'll be basing my vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Paul, did the, did the city, uh, and this is probably an obvious question, but we, we follow the parameters that the state requires for RFPs as far as, uh, point A, point B, point C, point D, this is what we're looking for, and then the respondents, um, uh, submit their proposals based on what the parameters are. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, we did follow the law in this request for proposals. Um, and the process has, well, you know, it's been, in my opinion, for a legal, legal basis, there's no questions of the legality of our original RFP process. Obviously, some people have concerns of whether or not the RFP could have been different to get more competition or something to that nature, but as far as the legality of the RFP and how it was done, all the proper procedures were followed.
Okay, that's the only question I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you. I just wanna be real succinct. Um, I, I, I do need to express some displeasure at the process. Um, for those who are not here on this discussion five years ago, it's eerily similar. Um, similar parties involved. It, I'm really frustrated. Um, it seems like, I don't know who to put fingers at, and that's not what I'm trying to do. This is not gonna be a witch hunt from my, my perspective, but I'm just very sad that we're at this stage again. Um, and I'm not gonna go down that road again, and I'm gonna hold the same position I held five years ago. I'm gonna say no to this vote, because I think that we do have one fair responsive bidder, and that's where it needs to go. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Councilmember Anderson?
No.
Councilmember Jacob?
No.
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
No.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
No.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
The vote fails three to four.
Mayor, I move that we accept the, the bid from the responsive bidder and enter into a contract as appropriate.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Newton and a second by Councilmember Nichols. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be speaking against this motion. I, I don't know that we've done this right. And whereas I didn't want to throw out the proposals that were given and to rebid, or to re, put it out for proposal again, I think they needed to be reevaluated, the ones that we got. I don't know that they were both unresponsive, in my opinion. I did look back through my emails, by the way. I do not see the questions and answers on, on the attachments that I got, so I could just be missing them, that's okay. We can look at them another time, see what the outcome of this vote is. That said, I, I think, I'm frustrated as well. I wasn't here five years ago, but I do think there's possibly a better way to handle this. So, I'll, I'll be speaking against this motion. I, I think this process still needs some work. Thanks.
I will be speaking against the motion as well, and I would be glad to entertain a motion that referenced what you described. I think the cleanest process was to reject all bids, because there can be no legal challenge in my opinion. But I'd be glad to, I, it's the process that I have big concern with.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. I was here five years ago, but I was down there instead of up here. And I remember thinking I didn't like the way that looked or went, and I was hoping that we had learned something from that. And so after today, I hope we make some changes. Thank you.
Let's vote. Oh, sorry, Chris, I missed you. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also going to speak against the motion, primarily because this is a multi-year, multimillion-dollar contract, and if in the end we receive one bid, either the market couldn't provide what we were asking for, or we're asking the wrong questions, and that is, when we're working with taxpayer money, especially millions of dollars at a time, I want to make sure that we do this right. As Councilmember Nichols mentioned, we were looking at this five years ago, almost, so that's something very, very similar. We started off with a request for quote, and then we received a response that had a benefit that was not articulated in what we had specifically asked for, and therefore that one item could not be considered. And that one item made a difference in how the contract would have been awarded. I don't have any frustration with the folks who, who bid, rather, I, I very much sympathize with them, but we do need to make sure that we have the right process. And while normally I would agree that, normally I would probably follow the process and say, well, as a city, we need to just learn from this, move forward, and just go with what we have, but we're looking at millions of dollars of taxpayer money. I think we have to be sure that we do this right, and I don't think it's there right now. So I would speak against the motion at this time. Thank you.
Let's vote.
Can I ask clarification? It was Councilmember Newton who made the motion and who's.
Councilmember Nichols, second.
Okay. I have DN twice instead of DN and CN. Okay, sorry. Let me fix that. Okay. Councilmember Newton.
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey.
No.
Councilmember Jacob.
No.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Mayor Roth.
No.
Councilmember Burton.
No.
The vote fails three to four.
Mayor, I'd like to move to reconsider the vote on rejecting all bids.
I will second that. I have a motion by Councilmember Jacob and a second by Mayor Roth. We're back to the original motion. Oh, that's right. Let's vote. This is reconsideration of the original motion.
Which was to reject all bids.
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Quick clarification, we're voting on whether or not we are going to reconsider.
Correct. Just to reconsider, correct.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Yes.
Councilmember Newton.
No.
Mayor Roth.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
No.
Councilmember Nichols.
No.
The vote passes three to four. Oh, sorry. Three, four to three. Yeah, four to three, three to four. Four to three.
I think that's a fail. I think you need two-thirds on a motion to reconsider. We would need five.
No. We just need simple majority. No. Motion.
Can I approach this?
No, this is a business item.
Council and Mayor, may I suggest at this point, I do have some concerns about the proposed direction the council is headed, and I would ask for an opportunity to discuss the matter in a closed session, as it does in fact involve litigation.
Councilmember Nichols.
I need to pull up my agenda item.
You got it. Well, we want to, you want to move this to closed session, this discussion.
Okay, how about this? I'm just going to wag this, see if we can do this. I move the council move right now at this time as its agenda is to close session to discuss, or strategy session to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation, and that we reconvene open here as soon as we're done.
Can we make, have two motions on the table at the same time? Do we have to remove the first motion?
We don't have a motion yet. We didn't reconsider.
Okay. I would second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Nichols, it's second by Councilmember Burton. Discussion to the motion. I would just, as a discussion item, I would like to make sure that we will have to go back to closed session for the discussion of the items listed again. This, this won't supersede that. Let's vote.
You have, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Chris.
Council McConaughey asking.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. I would ask if, instead of going that specific route, we could address business item E first, and then wrap up with D. If I'm not going to be able to participate in the closed session for item D electronically, then I don't want to make an ill-informed decision when we come back to reconvene. And I'm, I'm not sure it's valued up, hold tight, and wait until we get to E, so I would propose we switch the order of E and D before we enter one session.
Does anyone oppose to taking item E out of order so that Chris can participate? Of course, we have a motion on the table.
I'll withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw the second, but I have a comment. My comment is, wouldn't that be the same thing to akin as table in this item, if we do what Chris just suggested? Because we won't be coming back and voting them out today, so we, it's just a table.
Councilmember McConaughey, is that what, were you wanting to vote on this at the next regularly scheduled council meeting after we had a closed session on this issue? Is that what you were looking for?
No, it sounded like we were going to pause going to closed session right now, and then come back and resolve item D, move on to item E, and then move on to another closed session and adjourn from there. So I was proposing that we visit item E, then do the closed session for D, come back for any business that's necessary, and then go back to the closed session that is already agendaized.
Okay, that's the way I understood it. So, I move that we move on to item E, eight E, and then come back to item D. All in favor? Any opposed?
No.
One, the ayes have it. Item eight E, discussion and possible action regarding the temporary closure of 2,700 West, 7,000 South, affecting the north and south traffic. J, Justin.
Dave Murphy, the project manager, is here to address this item.
Actually, if, if we can just cut, I'm probably the most opposed to this item, and I've been very vocal about this, and I'm in favor of the closure as long as the concrete cylinders on the curb that was being prepared today breaks at 4,000 PSI prior to asphalt. Go ahead.
Mayor, 28-day concrete break time at 4,000, they, if they did high early, they'd be hard pressed to meet that even at three days. And I think you're worth that. But they have the option of using the concrete mix design they've already got approved, it's already been through this middle process. We do have a high early concrete, they can use that as well. It's their option to use that, that concrete or not, and if they do any damage to the curb, they obviously have to replace that curb at the time that we do the punch list on the project. So I, I understand your concern. I, I, I do get that. We've been stressing to them, you know, to have at least a seven-day break on that concrete. They will meet that seven-day break time on Phase 2A. Here at the corner at 27th, they will only have a three-day break time. So that, that's approximately where we're at right now. You have the packet in front of you, and if there are any questions about what they are doing at the intersection, I'd be happy to answer those. They're attempting here to restore the concrete, restore the ADA ramps in the sidewalks, close into the intersection at 27th, and pave through the north half. That is what is on the agenda here. That's why this closure is necessary, to complete this work in the timeframe that they have scheduled it for.
And they're not willing to go with higher, high-strength early concrete that will break at 4,000 in three days?
They, they haven't mentioned whether they are or they aren't. They do have that mix design approved, so I just haven't gotten confirmation back that that's the mix that they're using.
In my experience, I'm not worried about it cracking immediately, I'm worried about the microscopic cracks that are caused from the vibration that the citizens will be redoing this concrete within a couple of years, where it should be a 20- or 30-year lifespan. That's what I'm concerned about. So, I guess I'm changing my opinion then, based on what you stated.
If, if we need high early concrete to approve a closure, we can approve the closure with high early concrete.
Okay. We have, Councilmember Burton has a question for you.
Now, I'm a really good electrician, but I'm not very good with concrete or asphalt. But I do drive the streets, and I know 27th West is a main road through West Jordan in a very long one, and it probably goes longer than any others except Redwood Road. And I'm concerned that we are considering closing this after we made it abundantly clear at the start of the, of the contract that that road would not be closing, that we'd be doing it in quarters. And I see imporing concrete late in the year, so I'm, my question, is, is the concrete the issue, or is the asphalt the issue? And is there any way we can get this done and still keep it the way the contract was originally written?
The contract was originally written with one lane open in each direction. They are still meeting the intent of that, however, to pass through intersections, as we've already passed through intersections with the contract through 13th, 22, and 27th already with pipe work. Those intersections needed to close to certain turning movements. Turning movement closures were not precluded in the contract. It's just you had to be informed of those closures, and that's what we're trying to do here. The concrete work can be done year-round, cold weather, hot weather, that, that's not the concern. The concern is the paving, paving window, and temperatures being 50 degrees and rising for paving, for asphalt. So that is the window that we're trying to hit right now, and to be ahead of temperatures and get to completion as fast as we can over the next couple of weeks. And we're dancing around certain storms that will be coming with potential cold temperatures, and we have to pick our windows and proceed with the work during the, the windows that are available to us in the next couple of weeks.
This closure we're talking about, though, is a closure for 27th completely, is that right? No. The straight traffic can go through, just the turns cannot?
The northbound, southbound turns cannot.
But north and southbound, straight through can?
East and westbound are continuous. Those are open, and that's on the south side of the street. This is in the north half of the intersection, and turning movements are precluded northbound, southbound, as we do the asphalt through the intersection.
So if I'm driving on 27th West, and I don't want to turn onto 70th, I can keep on going?
Yes.
Thank you.
No, no, that's, that's not what's in the, you won't be able to pass through 27th. You'll be stopped. You'll have to turn right or left at 70th.
I thought you meant on 70th, you'll be able to continue.
No, no, he was asking 27th.
No, not on 27th. 27th will be closed northbound, southbound. Sorry.
Councilmember Newton.
David, let me understand, so, right now, on, on each side of 27th, there, there are places with no asphalt. Is this going to be to take out the existing asphalt and then pave all of that, or?
Just through the north half of the intersection.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
And it will take out the old asphalt and the patches that have been put in place when we went through with the piping.
Okay, all right.
And then we'll replace it with a new full lift and layer of the approved road section that we've got on the change order.
Okay.
Eighteen inches in depth, six inches of asphalt total.
And this is, the signs have indicated that this take starts tomorrow and goes through Saturday?
Yes.
And you think they can get done? Get it done in that time?
Yes.
Okay. Then, then, then I think the faster we can get stuff done, the, the better it'll be for our residents. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson. Chris, I'll get you in one sec.
Okay, I was going to defer to my colleague. So, this intersection, once this is done, will be completely open? I mean, north and southeast west?
The north half will have new asphalt. There is one sewer tie-in to happen on the south half, and then the south half gets new asphalt as well. So there's a second phase of this coming, whether it comes now, next two weeks, next spring, that's debatable.
So we're, we're just fixing half, and this will be, if the temperature stays over 50, this will be final, the final asphalt?
Yes.
And they, they're pretty, I mean, they've got asphalt contractors lined up, so it's not going to go longer than three days? They'll have it backed up Saturday?
Kilgore is lined up, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any kinds of penalties if they do not complete by October 14th?
October 14th doesn't stand out in my mind as the completion date.
He's talking about the three days.
Oh, 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 the three days time period. The penalty is that they will need to ask for a separate closure at another time, and they will be kicked out of the intersection.
And I can indicate that as a result of their last, when they went through on the, on the seventh, or 11th of September, they had certain expectations that they had to meet, they didn't. We've docked them approximately $22,000 for the failings they made as a result of those errors. So we would be on top of the issue, making sure that they take care of those responsibilities. They know we are serious about this, and I would imagine they're going to try to keep pretty consistent to that timeframe.
All right. I'll, the, the two comments I'll add, number one, I, I'm going to be supportive of the closure, because I want to get it done as quick as we can, but I certainly don't want my support of the closure to resonate with the contractor that we're okay with the significant time slips that we've seen, and that we're going to continue to allow this kind of exception in the future. We were very, very clear that we wanted to maintain traffic open, and I think our residents have been beyond patient with what we've seen so far, and it's only out of complete frustration that I'm willing to, to consider this in the first place. Having said that, I will only support this if they are required to use the type of concrete that Mayor Roth was suggesting. That would be the only, I, I would put that as an additional requirement. If there's no other requirements or penalties for missing, we're going above and beyond giving them something extra. giving them something extra. I think that is a very small thing that we ask. The other thought that I would throw out is with that closure, will folks going north and south or trying to? There's that church parking lot right down the east side, and I would have a little bit of concern for traffic I would expect to see trying to cut through there in an effort to avoid the intersection. So we might need to look at potential safety measures to avoid people stealing through that parking lot or doing other things that would jeopardize public safety. So I would just take that into consideration, but I would be supportive of this if there is an inclusion for the type of concrete Mayor Roth recommended. Thank you.
I have to clarify, I was just told by Councilmember Newton that they did in fact pour that today, that curb, this afternoon. I just saw them forming it earlier today, but evidently they poured it, so I guess my, I turn back to our engineers in their professional opinion. How long do you believe that, and did we get cylinders on that so that we know what the breaks are by, if they're paving the 14th, that's Saturday? I guess I'd ask if the engineers believe that that's enough cure time on regular concrete.
I'll check on the cylinders with my inspectors. I don't have a read on that east curb. They were still forming the west curb about 4 o'clock today. So the west curb, I don't believe is going to be poured until the morning. So I'm sending out a text right now to the contractor to tell them high early in the morning.
That may be true. The east curb was done at 2 o'clock.
Yeah. I'll have to check on the cylinders.
Councilman McConaughey, this is David Bricky. The problem with requesting that particular concrete in advance is we have to have Stevens, the engineers, confirm that that's something that they'll agree to. And since we're dealing with a timeframe right now, I think the mayor recognizes, and that's why he asked about the timing issue, as a result of the concrete being poured today. Isn't that correct, Mayor?
Yes. I'm sure if we don't have at least seven days on it, that it may not show up now, but it will show up in the near future, the problems. And I guess I just don't have a lot of faith in what I've seen to date on this project, so. I'm in, I was totally in favor of doing this if they would have poured high-strength early. Now I'm troubled. I want to get it done. The residents have put up with too much, too long, but I also don't want the residents to have to repay. We're paying for a first-class job, and I don't want them to have to repay for it in a year or two.
That's true.
Councilmember Newton.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, a motion would be in order. No, no, a motion would be in order.
And then I move that we allow the closure, temporary closure of 2700 West at 70th South affecting the north and south traffic for the three days, the 12th, 13th, and 14th of this month.
We have a motion by Councilmember Newton, a second by Councilmember Anderson. Discussion to the motion.
Mayor, excuse me, Mayor Roth? Sorry. That's just how a ball lands. Councilmember Newton.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey.
No.
Councilmember Burton.
No.
Councilmember Jacob.
No.
The vote passes four to three in favor.
Just a remark on that last particular item before we go into closed session about, I recommend that all the council members take a look at that after that's been paved, the curb that's been poured today and what's going to be poured tomorrow prior to acceptance of the work. It is our engineers and our inspectors' responsibility, but it's going to reflect back on us if it fails. We will now move to, we had the motion prior, we will, oh, what's with, okay, sorry. Councilmember Nichols.
I move that the council go to closed session for the items on the agenda packet, that we come back to open session afterwards. That will give us leeway if we want to cover something quickly and come back.
That's item 8D.
Yeah, then we come back to open session to discuss open, or item 8D.
I have a motion by Councilmember Nichols.
Second.
Secondly, Councilmember Jacob. Discussion to the motion. Oh, Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be voting in favor of the motion, but I would ask that after we go to closed session, Melanie, please don't disconnect me, and Mr. Bricky, would you please give me a call before the closed session starts? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Newton.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Mayor Roth.
Yes.
Vote passes seven in favor.
You're not being disconnected, Chris.
I'll sit and talk to you.
I'm going to leave. I've got the camera lens closed, and I'll keep the microphone going, but I'm going to want to speak with Mr. Bricky.